Everybody see Congresswoman Dean questioning this guy her about Biden's. Hearing today.
We still have time. He gets his stuff.
Now, is any. From the place that went to the site. There anyone having like. Right, because my body is on. Is with. What are they called? Something behind the badge. Families Behind the Badge Children's Foundation and they specifically provide services to help those families and. Any officers in the situation, so I had breakfast with him yesterday, maybe I should email him to Chief Kenny, okay. Okay, okay. They may also sponsor the touch a truck, he'll let me know tomorrow, is that something? They take the money from them, they want to dissponsor. Would I ask Towny or Chief? Thank you.
In one week, we have to do it. I think we're on, by the way.
Don't wait till I get this stuff.
Yeah.
What do you, what do you mean? Here. The line. This area.
Everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Sorry, sorry. I'll watch the arms, I'm gonna watch the elbows.
A call to order, the regular public meeting, the Lower Gwinnett Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, March 12th, 2024. The Board of Supervisors did meet an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of potential litigation. Want to open up the floor to citizens' comments, concerns, or questions for items not on the agenda. Anybody online? Seeing none, we will move on to building and zoning. We have consideration of a resolution, however, the applicant is not present today for preliminary and final land development. In addition. I don't think that we've come to a consensus on the final resolution, so I'd like to make a motion to table. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you. Next up is the final approval of master plans for Oxford Park, Ingersoll Park, Pen Ambler Park, and Penland Station Trails. Included in the board packet. Are references, and this is the approval of the finalized master plans for those parks that were mentioned. Again, the evaluation and the development of master plan was part of a grant that we received. This is just us finally approving those master plans, are there any questions from the board?
Just to be clear, the plans are aspirational until there's funding.
Correct. But I mean, our engineers here to answer any specific questions that you may have.
Thank you, and that is accurate. I believe a plan for phasing and potential grant funding was included in your packets as well, that's kind of the new information, I mean, that's what you haven't seen. Really before, we talked about the plans at length, been reviewed by this board. The Park and Rec Board, and then I'd also discussed this phasing plan with the Park and Rec Board in February, and there was some minor revisions that are reflective in what's in front of you tonight.
Jim, I have a question. So I'm not sure, it's on this page, maybe the next one, the. The planned. Trail or path connecting the. Little League area with. The Pen Ambler Park.
Yeah, we were calling it the Penland Station Trail, and it's right in the middle of the screen there.
How did you arrive at that figure for the cost?
Based on similar trail projects that we had designed. Recently.
Like what?
Like, what, meaning like the, like specific trail projects, or?
Yeah. Give me an example, please.
I can't think of one off the top of my head, but we are consistently bidding out like asphalt trail and paved, similar paving projects. We did one in Horsham Township that has the advanced warning flashing beacons that we would be installing across Pen Ambler. That crosses, it was part of the, the Horsham's Pico Powerline Trail and crosses Norristown Road.
Okay.
So there's, there's some signal work as well.
Yeah.
Are you thinking that it's too high or too low?
I don't know, I have no idea, but I have no basis on what you built that figure off of, and I was wondering if there was another trail in Lower Gwinnett that had a same.
There's no real, I think there's any other trails in Lower Gwinnett that we've bid out recently. When I say we, I mean Gilmore and Associates and like other neighboring municipalities, that's kind of what we use for the basis of these opinions of probable costs.
They're all going to be a little different because the length of the trail is going to vary, the. You know, impediment you might incur.
The amount of grading that you have to do.
So, so this is just a real estimate, a rough estimate.
Yes, these are what I call opinions of probable cost.
Okay. I was just curious, I didn't know what the basis was for the costing of that, okay.
I mean, do you, I probably have the cost estimate, you want me to bring that up?
Jamie mentioned, and she's correct, that there are detailed cost estimates for all of these within the report, so if you're interested in seeing the breakdown of how we got to 444, 418, we could, we could bring that up and talk about it.
Sure, if you, if you have a detailed estimate, I will take a look at that, we don't have to do it tonight.
Okay.
I think it's maybe not good use of our time.
Will the board have the opportunity to review the report before it's sent for to D C E D, like the final report?
Yeah, so I think the. The intention with this was to get the board's opinion and sort of blessing on, on the phasing plan, because we already, we applied for the Monco 2040 grant, which you are, you know, this board's aware of. And then we're also, we met with D C N R in relation to a C two P two grant, which is due at the end of May for Phase One at Oxford. And we've also applied for the L S A grant for Phase Two at. Ingersoll, and. So, I mean, at this point, we were looking for the, the board's guidance on, you know, that plan, and then the final. Like this phasing plan goes with the cost estimates, goes with the narrative report, and goes with the plans, and it all gets packaged together. For D C E D, so that you guys could get reimbursed for the money you've spent on the planning efforts, I can bring all of that back to the board for one final blessing, if you'd like.
When is the report, the final report due to?
Report is not due until the grant expires, and I don't believe it expires, and maybe even this calendar year, it could be, it could be next year.
But until that report is finalized, we can't theoretically, or we can start to apply for.
You could probably apply for a partial reimbursement.
Okay.
But I, I think what I wanted to, what we wanted to do is show D C N R that the report is, you know, in its final form, because we're going to reference when we apply for that grant, that like the board has adopted these master plans.
I, the field lighting for Ingersoll. Where, I don't, I'm not saying, I just don't remember discussing field lighting, what, what is the real viability of that? Given the townships. Sort of thinking generally on lights. I mean, is, is it realistic to think we're going to put lights up at Ingersoll Field?
If the Little League was voting, then yes.
Well, I know if the Little League was voting, but then I'm sort of thinking if the people in Georgetown have a say in it.
Then that, then they would say no.
Right.
I don't even think that's been recommended by the Parks Board that it officially be up. Yeah, but these are, well, my understanding, and Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't necessarily mean each and every single improvement that on, is on, is on here is approved by the board.
You're saying the Park and Rec Board?
And, and our board, if we say we're good with this.
Yeah.
Phasing plan, it doesn't mean we are committing to each line item, we're just okaying it for the overall. To be included in the plan, as a potential.
As far as the, and I guess I wanted to address that too, I mean, if we're saying 20, 30 and beyond for batting cages at the, at Ingersoll, that, that's sort of a big, and, and not to say that Ingersoll doesn't, isn't getting a lot, it is, but. That's a long way off to deal with. The McCormick House, and I mean, it's just, it's just a long way off.
That was going to be my question, is, is the phasing and the spacing of the phasing based upon the availability of funding potentially?
Yes, the, the spacing was after a discussion with Mimi on funding available in, in capital reserves, and we wanted to also try to match up grants with. Or projects with, with grants that, that fit those projects, and then, you know, it's unrealistic to think that we would be being awarded, say, two L S A grants in a year, or two D C N R grants in, in one year, so that's kind of like how the spacing happened. And then the inconsideration of your available funds.
It seems like some of the lower cost and easier implemented things like the Pollinator Garden or some of the design work at Oxford Park is 24, 26 directly because the funding could be available.
We applied for a Pico Innovation Grant for.
I was talking about the Gaga Ball Pit.
Oh. Okay.
That's 24, so, or I assumed it was 24 because it was only 19,000.
Twenty four to twenty six.
Yeah, it's in that.
Yeah, the Gaga, the Gaga Pit is 20, i- is in the nearer term because it's not a very large cost.
So that's what I wanted to know, so like those things, even if it was a two year.
Put into that, yes.
Span, it could be sooner, okay.
Are there any other line items like the lights for the ball field that are not likely to be approved that are on here?
I don't think so, I mean, I think the one for the, the lighting was, is the most contentious one, I mean, it was certainly a wish of the Little League, and. The Park and Rec Board was in favor of it enough to, you know, recommend that it even be listed and not stricken from the plan completely.
Have it stricken from the plan?
That I'm saying they, they didn't ask for it to be stricken from the plan.
To the cost estimates around Pen Ambler Park, just from my understanding. As it relates to some of the things that were pieced out. If something is, is what we would consider reasonable cost or lower cost, is it possible to happen before 25, or we're not even going to think about Pen Ambler Park, even though it's Phase One, until. Funding for everything would be available. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, we already have a Parks Grant for 24, so I think that's why, I think. It, we had to choose between.
Which ones?
Oxford or Pen Ambler to lead with.
Okay.
For the Parks, so the Parks Board recommended leading with Oxford, because that playground equipment, my understanding is, while it may not be the oldest, they don't make replacement parts for it anymore, so if anything breaks, we can't fix it in Oxford Park. So that's why that playground space was a priority for the Parks Board to recommend that grant funding, and then I guess we can't get two Parks Grants at once.
Yeah, no, so even though Pen Ambler is saying Phase One is 25, 27.
Right, because I think that's the first opportunity for grant.
Gotcha, okay.
And I, I think if I remember correctly, that kind of was tied into the, the funding. The township's funding.
And also just capacity, because it, keep in mind, you are well known, these are not the only capital projects that we have underway, so we have a whole bunch of different grants, and there's a whole bunch of different projects, and if you get the grant, then you're under a timeline, right, then you have to get the work done by the end of the grant, period. So there's just only so many projects we can handle and manage well at one time, so that was part of the idea with this, the schedule that was put together. With how to maximize the grants that we have, maximize our, the township reserves, how we would use it for match, because once we've committed as a match, we've sort of got to set it aside, we can't be promising it as match for someplace else, so like, you know, it gets. Even if we eventually get another grant that fills that, until we've, we've secured that, we have to make sure we have the matching for all of those different things, it was just to make sure we actually have the reserves that we need. And can handle, you know, enough, all these projects happening so many at, at a time, kind of trying not to totally make ourselves crazy.
And one, one thing that's not on here for Pen Ambler Park is the entrance for the carnival parking so that the events can, can be held there.
Yeah.
And that's something that we're pursuing currently with Pendot as far as the permitting for that goes, and I mean, the intention is to, to have that available for this summer.
Okay.
So that, that's an, that's an improvement to Pen Ambler Park that you don't see here, that will be happening in the near term.
I have another, excuse me, question about the pickleball situation, we had discussed some time ago about. Potentially putting pickleball courts at the Y M C A, has that, is, is that no longer a possibility, have we discarded that?
I think there were issues with regard to the Y's involvement and. Sort of rule structure that they were going to impose.
I think that the cost, coupled with the idea that the Y would have to have the complete ownership of how they prioritized the reservation, we wouldn't have input and it would be their courts theoretically, didn't. I think, and I'm not sure where the Park and Rec Board, Janine, please jump in, fell on this, but I think that it caused us to have. A, a further reflection upon what was the most appropriate way for us to provide pickleball to our township residents, knowing that they would not get priority at the Y necessarily, and that the cost almost was equivalent to us just building it on our own.
Okay, very good.
If, so first of all, this, it is, even the phasing schedule is still just a plan, I, I doubt it's all going to happen exactly in this order as other funding becomes available, we're not likely to get every single grant, no one is successful 100% of the time, so stuff is, is going to move as we go. But in the short run, if there's, if there's any of the, you know, if there's anything we have pushed way back that you want us to move up sooner, that would be very helpful to know, so that we are focused on what grants to search for, and in particular, the, the ones that are teed up in 2024 and 2025, like the. Oxford Park, we're going to be coming back to you at the next meeting, looking for approval for the, the D C N R grant for that, if there's a difference, if you'd rather we do Pen Ambler Park, for example, then that would be helpful for us to know tonight, the sooner the better, just so we can make sure we're working on the right grant application.
So has the Park and Rec Board approved this schedule?
Yes, they, Jim presented it at the last meeting, they made some tweaks, pickleball being one thing that actually moved up in priority in Pen Ambler. At the recommendation of the Park Board, and I think there were some other. Changes that they made after the, that discussion Jim presented, Mimi was there as well to talk about the priorities, and so they saw it and.
Okay.
More on board with it, the, the one thing that I will add, and I've spoken with Jim about this, but just so everybody's in the loop. The Little League also, you know, reviewed and looked at the phasing for Ingersoll. And one flag was raised about, we have a. Phase two, we talk about parking lot improvements, and that may interfere with their current batting cages, so we may have to move sort of the batting cages. Up or move that parking lot improvement down, just so that we're not. Taking away their batting cages, and then we're not giving them new batting cages for seven years or something like that, so it just shows that this is going to be in. You know, in flux as things happen, but. I know that the Parks Board and staff really wants comments from us, if there's things we know, we want to pursue or prioritize, or things that we know we don't. So they know how to. Make their plans, and Oxford, as I explained, the Parks Board prioritized that. Primarily because of the issue we have with the playground equipment, and it would be a, a very significant renovation to that park, it's a very active park, and. That was the one with like all the inclusive equipment and a porn play surface.
Well, these, the timelines may change also if they, you know, if the Parks and Rec Board or there's somebody comes up with a private donation, says I want to build a pickleball court, I'm willing to give you $400,000.
Yep. So my question is, is.
Anyone want to give us $1,000, $1,000?
If there's the ability to, I think the playground equipment and as far as end restrooms to me are kind of competing with some of the most important things. Because young families taking their kids to parks and having fun equipment as well as having access to a bathroom, kind of go hand in hand, I know that they're separate, I know that there's a large cost to them, but it's the only thing that I think of, like as we improve the playground equipment, is access to basic things like a restroom. Place to wash your hands might be helpful, running water, those kind of things. Those are the only two things that are sticking out to me, like they might. Benefit from going together or increase, I know that there are large costs, and it might not make sense, but if they could be prioritized, I think that makes sense as well. Again, anything that's low hanging fruit, that, that we could do quickly, like the Gaga Ball Pit, I don't know that kid that loved the Gaga Ball Pit, sticks out in my mind. And any of the playground equipment, I think, you know, the sooner the better. So like Pen Ambler's restroom. Is, is, hold on, let me go back now, I have to go back to Pen Ambler, it's, it's 25, 27, it's, I get that that's Phase One, I understand that it's, but like, so if we could do restrooms together, is that possible? No, I see. No, I know, it's, it's access to water and stuff.
So it would be, it'd probably be a choice, I mean, what, the, the way the Parks Board viewed it was a choice between Phase One at Pen Ambler and Phase One at Oxford, right, and it was like, which are we going to do?
No, I agree with Oxford.
And you, most of our grants max out. Part of where you're putting the base together, trying to make the most of that, you know, open maybe once in a while and get more than that, but tons of application. So this, you know, this is set up to try to make the most of that, if, if the board wants to move a project forward, you would use your reserves, our reserves are maxed out.
Yeah.
We don't have any beyond that, if you build it. Other projects you can wait upon, you want to use those reserves, we can talk about that, but I mean, the big way to move these projects ahead faster, we need to issue borrow. You don't want to wait for grants. You don't have enough reserves for all of the projects you need to borrow for that.
We don't have any ARPA funding left to earmark, right?
So, if, if we accept this plan tonight, is there another point in time where the public can weigh in on each of these phases, or, or are we pretty much set on what's going to happen?
Isn't that the purpose of this public meeting?
Yeah, I think that the public has had an ample time between multiple visits here and the Park and Rec Board, and the, the community engagement that we did prior to. Even, you know, while we were developing the plans, we met with, with Trails, we met with the Little League, we met with Ambler Junior Baseball, who's a user of the Pen Ambler Park. Before we, while we were making the, these plans up. I don't know that the. It's up to you, if, if the board wants.
There's also going to be, every year you're going to have a chance during the budget process, because these will be part of the capital plan, in the summer, Melinda and I are going to be bringing you a whole funding plan for all our capital projects, so that's going to be another opportunity, in September, you're going to be able to talk about it again, and, and I think as these projects shift around, we'll be updating it and bringing it back to you, so yes, there's going to be, so right now, we're trying to finish this up, and, and that's where, I agree with Jim, that's up to the board, if you all want us to pause and, and have the public weigh in on these things, we can ask for that. But as far as just these capital projects, it's just going to be over and over again, we're going to be updating it and presenting it to the board and discussing it in a public meeting.
Yeah, but my only concern is that, you know, typically when we. Reach out to the public, we get, you know, a few, maybe a few hundred, if we're lucky, people responding in, so many people uses, use the parks, it would be. It would be good to, to get more input, but I do appreciate the input that you've already gathered, and, and the Parks and Rec team have already gathered, it just. I just thought maybe if there was one other. Timepoint when the public might be of interest, you know, to weigh in, but.
But theoretically, when we, if we apply for any grant, though, they would, it would be a public meeting that we'd have to vote to authorize, they could come in again and have a conversation, but we did have the plans on display for two weeks, we had it at the Fall Fest, we had it at our comprehensive plan, so.
The other thing too, and I think that, I think Kathy Morris is on the call too, so she, she would not be happy with me if I didn't share this, but this all sort of came out of the Parks and Rec survey that was done. Years ago, that was sort of like their first. That was sort of like their first step where they reached out to the community to get input. And that, you know, has turned, turned into ultimately recommending these plans. So we have engaged the public along the way.
I think, isn't this sort of the culmination of all the public engagement? I mean, we've been doing this for years.
Yeah.
Don't think we need any more discussion. We need to move on this.
But just, uh, just to go before I'm going through some of the files, I'm seeing a September 2022 Lower Guinea Township Park and Rec Strategic Plan, which I'm, I'm assuming this is all part of that strategic plan, is that correct?
So the initial strategic plan was prior to getting the grant to fund the master plans. The strategic plan was an overview and a look at all of your parks and the different amenities within those parks. And then that, out of that, the board decided to focus master planning on these three parks and this trail connection.
Okay, so this has really been out in the public since, for several years now, I guess. Is that fair to say?
Yes, that is accurate.
Okay, and then just another way of asking, which I think you did answer is that, you know, we will, say, would you go ahead and we vote and we approve this. There's still flexibility to this if we need it, say, something pops up, like the capital plan and so forth. So there's a lot of flexibility should we need that, but we need something to
There is literally an infinite amount of flexibility. This is just, it's, it's planning, so there is. I mean, you guys, the next board could say, we don't want to do anything with the
That's why we got to get it done.
I think you had a public comment.
Any additional comments or questions from the board? Questions or comments from the public? You just have to come up and state your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Tina Martin. I was newly appointed to the Human Relations Commission this year. And I have some comments on questions and comments. I'm on the board of Georgetown. And as far as I know, we may be the only private property that's impacted by this. So I not realize that I'm the only one here today, but we just found out that this was going to be raised again today. We found out this morning, we were not able to assemble people in time to come to the meeting. I have a number of questions and concerns that I could read off. It would take me a couple of minutes or I could send to you. But we do have some really major concerns about responsibility. Georgetown per se is not against the trail. I mean, maybe some people are, but as, as a community, we're not against it. However, we're extremely concerned. This is our private property. We have a lot of open space. We have woods. It's going to be cut down, some part of it has to be cut down. That's our buffer, buffer from Pen Ambler and the train station. And we have growth all along Pen Ambler that may or may not be disturbed. So we're very concerned about that. Each of us gets a letter. Every time somebody on Brights Lane puts a fence up or something, we get a letter saying, you know, there's going to be, you know, we have an opportunity to comment. We've never, none of us have ever gotten a letter about this. So you're saying you're consulting a number of groups. You've never reached out to Georgetown. We found out about this for the first time, I think around September. And we're relying on people being lucky enough to look at the agenda to see when this is coming up. Because it's our private property, we want to be included. We want, we have serious questions about liability. Once you put this trail through our property, who's liable when somebody's injured? Cause it's on our property. How does this impact our insurance? Can our insurance be dropped? Once this happens that we have this, this trail? Because our insurance just increased 60%. This is happening to condominiums all across the country.
Do you want me to address that right now or do you want to continue with your
Well, um,
Because the, the issue, the primary issue with that is that the, the trail wouldn't actually be on your property. It would be within right of way that the township already, already has. And so the, that wouldn't be an issue. And then any kind of maintenance in my eyes wouldn't fall on Georgetown. And so, you know, I think all of that could be certainly worked out.
So it would involve Georgetown. It would involve Georgetown.
So just, we had a, we did have a meeting where I think a large group of Georgetown
I understand, yeah, I understand.
And that was prior to, that was the master plan. It was a separate meeting where we just kind of unveiled the master plans. This is before it was on, it was either before or during the two week display here at the township.
Right.
And those comments and those concerns were received by us as a board. The issue is what we're voting on today is just the approval of the master plans. And kind of to some of the board members' comments and questions, we're not authorizing anything except for the finalization of this actual plan. And so that we can submit it to the state for reimbursement for the grant we received. Now, the phasing and the actual execution of the plan will happen over a series of years.
Understood.
And it'll happen in a public meeting with us authorizing either whether it's grant dollars or township money to be spent. At that time, you will get an awareness of that that meeting is going to occur. You'll be invited to attend and we would hope that you would share your feedback. I think Jim, our engineer, is speaking to the fact of, and we did express this at that master plan meeting. We would not be developing anything on Georgetown's property. It might be perceived that it's Georgetown's property, but we would be developing it within the right of way. That actually is the township's property. So if it's the township's property, we would be responsible for maintaining it to ensure its safety. And, and we would be, have to follow all the rules that anyone would have to follow. But as far as awareness before any decision is being, going to be made, we would absolutely ensure that Georgetown knows before any kind of decision about anything being actually executed would happen.
So this shouldn't affect your, this shouldn't affect your insurance because it's not your property. So you're not making an improvement to your property. You shouldn't have any liability if somebody falls on the trail, again, because it's not your property.
Right, it's not our property, but you made us trim all the bushes along Pen Ambler.
Well, again, if it's in the right of, if that may have been because it's in the right of way.
So that was our responsibility then. See what I mean?
I, I understand.
The trail goes there.
The, the trail will abut your property. It will be no different than the sidewalk that is in front of my house, no different at all. The public has a right to walk on my, on the sidewalk in front of my house. This, the public will have a right to be on this trail. And, and I think I mentioned this, and I understand the concern, but I'd almost guarantee that the sidewalk in front of my house is much closer to my front door than this trail is going to be to anyone's front door at Georgetown.
It, it's not, that's not the total, the total concern. There, there, I will email my list of concerns to you because I don't want to take up all of your time. But rather than relying on a Georgetown owner discovering that this is being raised in one of your meetings, we need to be informed ahead of time. Because we would all be here if we knew that it was being discussed. And I get concerned when you're saying you're done speaking with the public. Where are you or are you not? That wasn't clear. But we don't consider ourselves pu, the public, we're owners. We're impacted in a way that no one else is. The rest of these things are community parks. This is our home, it's our property value, it's our liability. You know, I have a friend who was sued when somebody slipped on her sidewalk. So you're saying we have no liability, but how can you, homicide.
Miss, sorry, just a couple of things. What I'm hearing is that there's, first you have a concern about just communication with Georgetown residents. And then the second is that you have a list of more specific concerns in regards to the trail. So the, I guess the first question is, is there like a, a group of
We have a board.
Of you guys that, yeah, so is there a, like a contact? And then would there be something, someone that maybe if something happens, we would just say, hey, we'll shoot an email or a contact to your, to, to one person?
Yeah, that would be very much appreciated.
Or, or maybe even somebody from the township could go and meet with your board and discuss this because it's on the drawing board and you have every right to know the intent and the long range plan and the timing and all the aspects of this trail. I think you have every right to know that. And so it sounds like the, the thought is that your questions can be answered adequately. But up until this point, it sounds like you haven't had your questions answered.
No.
And so I, I think it would be a good idea to have a little better communication. And if that's somebody from the township building to come over to your board meeting and answer questions.
And we have every intention of doing that. So I, I know this is just confusing because this is just sort of like government process. And I, I can totally understand why it feels like, you know, we're trying to, to do something and not informing Georgetown.
I want to counsel, so I know about how slow things
And, and this, so this is just part of this process for this master plan. We really want to get this done so we can get the grant reimbursement and be using that for other projects.
Yeah.
So all this is doing is letting us finish that master plan.
Sure.
We, the board had direct us when we, when we did have a crowd in here, that we need to reach the staff, including our, our engineer needs to reach out to Georgetown when we get into more, you know, have a little bit more detailed engineering and all that. We haven't gotten there yet. We need to get there. This project is teed up as a, a project to start this year. So, so in the near future, we will be reaching out, but we really aren't any further along in this planning process than we were before. So I just want to reassure you, we weren't ignoring the board's direction. We just, you know, this is, it's one of the, we need to be able to get some things done so that we could start working on this kind of projects. But that, one of the first things we need to do, we recognize, is to talk to Georgetown.
Before we approve any trail, they'll know, right? They'll, they'll have a chance before we even vote on it.
Well before that, well before.
The reality too is that when I said the trail would be within the public right of way, it, when it will be. The impacts to Georgetown could be outside of the public right of way, meaning like some grading easements or, you know, all kinds of things of that nature in which we would absolutely be at the table with them talking about it.
Well, yeah, for, for example, we have an entrance on Pen Ambler. We have signage, plantings, paving, lighting. What happens to that? It's going to be disrupted.
That's all the things.
I mean, I think the thing, we're so far from even, we haven't even approved the building, the trail yet.
We're not a wealthy community.
I don't think that
We don't have a lot of reserves either.
What we're trying to say is, Ms. Martin, we're not at that point, we're not close.
So I'm
You guys will definitely get noticed before, before, when we consider it. You guys will have notice, bring, bring the whole community
So from now on, from now on, we'll get noticed because we have not
You always will. This is just us approving this plan so that we can get the grant money back. That's all that we're doing today.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing is being, so there was going to be a hope on, for example, building the trail. Or consideration of the trail. Georgetown would get noticed, correct? Because it would literally be going right, who would have bought their parks, less than one.
And, and well before that, because as Jim has said, in order for us to be putting more of that information together for you to approve, so that we could go out to bid or anything like that, we need information from you. We know we need to provide you with more details of the plan. Jim needs to put those details together. That, that hasn't even happened yet. You, you haven't, you're not missing anything.
Okay.
You're not, it's not that decisions have been made. There's really, we're not much further along right now than we were when, was that five or six months ago? When there was that meeting here, we're just trying to get this done so we can get moving on to other things.
Okay, all right.
You disagree, but you're definitely going to get your set, correct? I mean, there, there, there's no question about that. I mean, no one's going to do this under cover of darkness, so you guys don't know. I mean, you'll definitely know.
Yeah. And, and as I said before, a, as a community, maybe a few of us are opposed, but in general, we're not opposed. We're concerned about cost to us, liability to us.
So those are the conversations
Disruption of the property, those types of
Talk about when we, when, when we're at that, nobody's going to shut you out very quickly.
So Jimmy, I have your email, you have mine, so I'll write you with the list and, and maybe you can notify me when meetings come up that involve us.
Yeah, definitely you can email me or pre, anyone. But I do, I am very curious to get that list so we can make sure that we are addressing some of your concerns if we can. I think you can go back and let everyone in Georgetown kind of know that tonight, there's no final, we're not making final plans to put a trail right here and right there. This is really just a basic approval of yes, let's start kind of making, this is an approval to say, yes, let's start kind of making plans at certain timeframes. Is that correct, Jim?
Yeah.
Like bigger on a, on, on a global scale of all of our parks. Nobody's talking about anything with the trail that's going to, that, that may or may not affect the Georgetown.
The scope, the scope of this plan was to figure out if a trail is feasible. If the trail is feasible, is it, is it more favorable on one side of the street or the other? For a multitude of reasons. And right now it is a line on the plan that connects two points. And there's so much more that has to happen between now and when a shovel is put in the ground.
I actually personally always wondered why you wouldn't go across our front also. So you wouldn't have all those crosswalks involved because
Your frontage on
On Old Penland, you know, it just
Mostly from a cost perspective, we were, we're trying to get people to, the, the train station was ultimately the destination.
Okay, gotcha.
But that doesn't mean that what we have laid out now couldn't be extended along there in, in the future.
Okay, thanks, everybody. I really appreciate that. Here's the
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from the public?
I think none, so we have the memo. Can I just ask one question, just so I'm clear on, on process now? So back to Janine's question, do you want, so are you just approving kind of this as an intermediate step? Do you want to see the whole plan? Because we were planning on kind of finishing it all up and sending it back. It's not a problem at all to bring the whole master plan, the document back to you before we submit to DCNR. Do you want us to do that?
I, I don't want to.
I, I don't need to see it.
Many, many times.
I don't want to see it.
You see a whole lot of text that goes with it.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen
That's not very nice.
I trust your hard work. I know that you'll write a beautiful narrative.
Yes. Is, is anyone disagreed? Does anyone feel the need to see it?
So
I'm just
Well, it's right, it's in SharePoint, correct? That
Bluff that goes with the stuff that you've received.
Yeah, the narrative, the
Yeah, I, so we have it, so
We don't have the narrative. We don't have all of the, the lovely flowery language that Jim will have put in and his team.
Jim's team mostly.
It'll probably be like how much your time, right? And because you're getting reimbursed for the cost. We're getting reimbursed for the cost that we spent for you to make these wonderful
I think that if we're, if you guys are at a point where you feel comfortable with everything that we've discussed at this point, that I don't really see a need to bring it all back because you've seen it in parts and approved it in parts. So, I mean, but I'm, you know, be happy to come back and talk about it.
Okay, no, I don't feel any kind of, I don't think
I think if I, if I want to take another close look, I'll go on the SharePoint and have a look at it. I think this is not a good use of time to bring it up again here.
Thank you so much for all your hard work, all the presentations that you've done to community partners and to us.
Okay, welcome and all of the team now.
To approve the final, the final master plans for Oxford Park, Ingersoll Park, Pen Ambler Park and Penland Station Trail. Is there a second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the consideration of an amendment to Chapter 282 in the Township Code revising the structure of the historic advisory of the Historic Advisory Committee. We made the authorization to advertise in our previous meeting, included in the board packet is the memo from our Township Manager outlining the creation and what this attempts to do and how the new structure will follow the model of the Fall Fest Committee. They'll be appointed to one-year terms and membership may fluctuate year to year depending on the amount of help or expertise needed for the particular stories to be told and/or events to be organized. Is there any questions from the board?
Is there going to be like a chairperson of this impromptu committee?
I'll let, I'll let our solicitor answer that.
Yes, the ordinance calls for the board to appoint a chairperson.
Okay. Yeah, so it's going to have some direction, I guess, other than let's just meet and discuss history.
Yes. I, I'm, I'll still sit as a liaison on the committee and we've discussed, you know, the priorities that the board has discussed, the historical markers, the education piece, the Penland School with the committee. So this is just a way for them to be able to work more efficiently on what they've already been tasked with by the board.
Yeah. So based on our conversation earlier, how, it, it, how will there be a quorum? Is there going to be a set number of people and there will be a quorum?
I don't think there's subject to.
They will not.
Because they can't make like official decisions.
Okay. So we don't.
Ordinance does provide for the appointment of members by the board, one or more members.
Okay. I'm, I'm just trying to get a feel for how, how formal this is going to be versus.
It's be much more similar to the Fall Fest Committee.
Okay. Whether it will be leadership and they'll have direction and they'll have goals and things like that. Okay.
Any additional questions from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment to Chapter 282 in the Township Code revising the structure of the Historic Advisory Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is, is Resolution 2024. I don't think we have a number yet. I'm sorry? Eleven. Revising the structure of the Historic Advisory Committee. So included in our packet is the resolution formalizing the Volunteer Historic Committee, authorizing the Volunteer Historic Committee. And it goes through the whereas's and the therefor's included in our packet. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-11 revising the structure of the Historic Advisory Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next up on the agenda was a conversation or a discussion or a vote needed for a change order for replacement of a deteriorating pipe on the Sommetown Pike. However, we've gotten communications from the county that they would not like us to move forward and that they would move forward at a time later to be determined to address the deteriorating pipe. So unless there's any questions, I would like to make a motion to table.
I have questions.
Mr. Torsky?
How badly deteriorating is the pipe?
I think deterioration is relative.
What is this, what is the condition of the pipe? What was the consequence of the pipe being deteriorating?
Oh, the consequence could be that they're down the road. Reputation that essentially provide was. Further communication back.
That's what I was going to ask. Is there like an appeal or can we challenge their determination?
Challenge appeal. I mean, I, I want to be brief further. Based on the total picture that we get from the town.
Who would be financially responsible for the change orders in that we have in our packet? The 1A and 1B, which I guess 1B is not is to be determined, but who would be financially responsible for this? Us or the county?
Well, that's what we were trying to get a determination from. Not clear from the permit that we received. It would be response. During project facility that the township is calling part of project that township.
Many don't have a crystal ball and the JDM people don't have a crystal ball. Like, are we talking about there could be a failure two weeks after the road is opened up again or 10 years after the road is up, opened up again? Because people aren't really happy with the construction now. You can imagine what will happen if they have to open the road a month, six months after, and they have to close the road and open up the, open up the piping. Afterward, they just had to shut down for six, eight, nine months.
Yeah, there, there's, there's definitely that part of it. It would, it would be just under speculation at this point. They can throw the last of nature clear. You know, I think the other issue. We're out here going to work now.
It's open.
It's open.
Yeah.
The county may not agree with the price that but it just back up two years, how five years get everything back up again. Like said.
I guess, i- is the other question I have just from our perspective, because it's not township road, we don't have authorization to do anything to the roadway or to the pipe because it's not our road.
Ultimately, and we need to do further clarification.
I guess my perspective is the inconvenience would be not only to路过 residents, but to anyone traveling through this intersection. And us would have to, to deal and mitigate that if we found that, you know, that we know this is going to fail.
Like a maxed out $120,000.
Yeah.
Chad, does the, the, the pipe that we're talking about, does it go all the way along Sommetown Pike?
Yeah, from within our project limits. Session. So we're all looking at, you know, the limits within our project.
Can you give us landmarks so we can kind of just conceptually understand the, the length of it?
Yeah.
Does, does the deteriorated part hook into that new culvert that's under the Sommetown Pike?
Just a question while they're bringing it up, and you may have already answered this and I apologize, but the pipe that you were able to evaluate, I guess how long, big, or how much percentage of it as compared to the, the whole length of the pipe? And then two is how bad was the pipe you did evaluate and what, like how bad deteriorate, what condition is that pipe in, in your opinion?
We, we have some, we have a few pictures of it. There's some significant falls. Condition of just that short segment. I deteriorated condition. And that maybe that it's that particular section.
I'm going to put the all the way up to 202.
Potentially, but that's not.
Be honest with us.
Yeah.
What runs through the pipe? Is it stormwater?
Stormwater.
Is that pipe though?
It's a 42-inch pipe, so it's care of it.
Lot of water.
So just if you'd say one is in great condition and ten is in terrible, it's got to be replaced today condition, where would you rate?
I, I want to say for certain that we're only seeing one side of the pipe right now. It's not.
Oh, you can see it.
So you can see like here, just in this small area that's exposed and it's just one side of the pipe. Like certain areas. So when you start to see things like this, in the age of the pipe, I believe it's not, it's, it's, it's an old pipe. Can't recall the age offhand. But when you start to see holes like that, that.
I, I guess the question is, let's just assume that the pipe is like that on the other side and the whole length of the piping that, you know, the, whatever that is within路过 township's jurisdiction, would, what would you rate that just as you see it right there?
That it needs replaced.
So it'd be a tank.
Real kind of numbering system or anything.
There's a big hole in it. I mean, water is coming out of it. When water flows through the pipe, it's getting into groundwater.
Yeah, it's hard out.
No, no, it's a big tear. And is this the Texaco side of the street or the other side of the street?
No, this is the southern side of Sommetown Pike.
And just, just so, and again, if you answer this and I forgive me for my ignorances, what is the, I mean, what, I guess, what is, what would happen if all the stormwater didn't go down the pipe because there's holes all over and how does that detrimentally affect the environment and the township? Significant habit could be.
It's not a great spot for a sinkhole.
So that, that's the structure of pipe that we're, we're talking about.
Doesn't get a lot of traffic.
Right in front of Texaco.
Yeah, lots of people driving over that broken pipe.
Yeah.
Does it empty into the culvert?
Yeah.
So next steps are you go back with the county and try and.
Yeah, let's see the additional information.
Is there anything that they could say to you to make you feel like this doesn't need to be replaced?
I mean, it's, it's, you know, one engineer's opinion versus another. That they feel that they, they have their opinion, you know, it might take some discussion.
So in the interim, has Morrissey not moved forward with whatever other work they needed to do?
They're, they're getting to a point soon where
And. The other question I have is, does this type of pipe, the size of the pipe, the type of water, like the stormwater that it's pushing through, is this what causes the sinkhole?
No, the sinkhole's more related to.
That's not something, but potholes and deterioration of the roadway. Like where do the possible ramifications if nothing is done? I guess I want to understand.
Just in general, no, it could potentially be flooding issues. It is a large pipe. It's a 42-inch pipe. So if there is a big failure in the pipe, it'll lead to a small sinkhole type nation.
Okay. No geyser though.
Alright, so at this point, we don't have any directions from the county and staff are going to have another conversation. I'd like to make a motion to table. The change order for replacement of that pipe, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chad. You do. Next up is authorization to advertise the amendments to Chapter 420 of the Township Code adding break retardant restrictions on Sommetown Pike and Route 202. Chad, do you want to discuss?
Yeah, just so briefly, we, we discussed it prior meetings. They, that, that depend on Route 202, the pipe and to determine if segments of this and which part of the protection. It's also those studies and reviews in that and versions of the two roadways and criteria protection. It's a red all pipe. Most of the suites. So also the PennDOT County Review, a draft ordinance. Also the PennDOT County Review draft ordinance.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertising of the amendment to Chapter 420 of the Township Code adding breaker charter restrictions on Sommetown Pike and Route 202. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Chad. Next up is the approval of the minutes for our February 27, 2024 meeting. Has everyone gotten a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Anything from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the February 27, 2024 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries and Tessie is abstaining.
Okay.
Do I, do I need to make a motion to add?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to add the minutes from our February 29, 2024 meeting with the EAC, public meeting with the EAC. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Will I get the vote on that one?
You do. So those, the approval of those minutes is now added to our agenda. Has everyone gotten a chance to review those minutes? Any questions, concerns, or comments? I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of our February 29, 2024 public meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is our supervisor liaison reports. They were included in the board packet. If there are any questions or comments. Seeing none, move on to staff updates. No updates from the staff? Okay, there it is. Supervisor comments, Tessie?
I, I don't have any comments.
Janine?
Just a reminder about the Easter egg hunt, March 23rd. Bring the kids.
Which, what's the time? What's the time?
Couple time slots.
Okay.
10, 10 a.m. I think it starts, but it's based on age group, so.
There it is. Okay. It's on our website.
Check out the website.
Six-year-old, do we show up?
Better get there real early. Sandy, Sandy won't let you out then.
I'll be late.
Bring your own basket. No, that's it. Thanks for everything.
Jimmy?
Just excited for the Easter egg hunt.
Mike?
I like how the township is fighting against daylight savings time by keeping the clock at 7:12. I agree, this will be a quick meeting, end by 7:30.
I'd like to say, I'd like to thank the staff for all their hard work regarding park master plan, getting us information regarding, you know, kind of the unforeseen change ordinances, orders. And we just appreciate all your diligence, especially as it relates to the culmination of us upgrading our parks. So thank you to the staff, thank you to the parking wreck board. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.
Y'all are adjourned?
Where is this Easter egg hunt?